Willie Finney, Jr. And Pastor Finney is the eldest child of Pastor Willie Finney, Senior, and Vicki Finney. He's also the eldest of three children, born of the late Barbara Williams. He's a graduate of Central High School, also a retired Army veteran that served during Desert Storm. Been married to his wife Yolanda for eighteen years. And Pastor Finney, thank you so much for being here with us tonight and leading us in such a good invocation. The Pledge of Allegiance was led by two outstanding students, Jasmine Martin. Jasmine Martin would be a tenth grader in the coming school, yet Southwest High School. Jasmine works hard to excel in her academics and has been chosen to receive the REACH Scholarship upon graduation. That's exceptional, Jasmine. Congratulations to you. Absolutely. Wow. Wow. She's also very active in her community and believes in always doing what she can for others. Jasmine has taught a community service class for the past two summers in order to teach the importance of community service to younger 4-Hers. Jasmine's been a member of the Macon-Bibb County 4-H since the seventh grade. So congratulations, Jasmine, and thank you very much for being here. Larry Howard. Larry. Larry Howard will be a senior in the coming year at Southwest High School. Larry's a well-rounded student who not only excels in his academics and athletics, but is also very active in many organizations and in school and community. Larry's been a member of the Macon-Bibb County 4-H Club since the fifth grade. Past school year, Larry completed the district project achievement where he placed second in the Food for Fitness Project. He enjoys volunteering his time to educate younger 4-Hs on the importance of staying active and eating healthy. Outside of 4-H, you can find that practicing for football or working at the DQ. You know, thank you very much, Larry. You know, when you hear so many bad things about young people now, and you get kind of down, it's always refreshing to see two such talented and dedicated young people. So thank y'all very much for being here with us, and congratulations to you. Best of luck in your future studies and academic endeavors. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. And the minutes of the special call meeting of June the twenty-eighth, and our pre-commission meeting of July the third, and regular commission meeting of July the third have been prepared and distributed in advance. Are there any corrections or changes? And if not, can I get a motion to approve as submitted by Commissioner Shepherd, second by Commissioner Wynn? Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and those three sets of minutes are approved. We have invited guests, and I didn't see him when I came. Yes, I do. There he is. Hot diggity dog. We have an invited guest, and I'd like to ask Spencer Hawkins to join me at the podium. We have great people working for us here at Macon-Bibb County. And it gives me a lot of pride and pleasure to recognize some of their achievements. Spencer Hawkins is a great guy. Spencer Hawkins is a dedicated husband, the father of three young children. As a youth, he earned the rank of Eagle Scout, and since then has continued to receive various other community leadership awards. Most recently, in 2017, Spencer was honored by the Greater Macon Chamber of Commerce for his community leadership with the Charles J. Fellow Award. Spencer spent eighteen years as a professional emergency manager, working in all levels of government and the private sector. In 2015, he was appointed the Director of the Macon-Bibb County Emergency Management Agency. Prior to Macon-Bibb, he was Vice President of Crisis Management for PNC Bank. And Spencer spent four and a half years working in Washington, DC for the Army and Navy, developing emergency management policies. He spent ten years in Central Florida with Orange County Emergency Management, Florida Department of Health and Emergency Operations, and City of Orlando Emergency Management. Throughout his career, Spencer has served with the Department of Health and Human Services, National Disaster Medical System. He's got a bachelor's degree in public administration and a master's degree in criminal justice, both from the University of Central Florida. He's a certified emergency manager with the International Association of Emergency Managers. But this year, at its annual conference, the Emergency Management Association of Georgia named Macon-Bibb County Emergency Management Agency Director Spencer Hawkins as the 2018 EMA Director of the Year. And I am absolutely pleased and proud to present to you our EMA Director. The one, the only, the dedicated, the man with his finger on the switch for the sirens and everything else, Spencer Hawkins. And to say, Spencer, thank you for what you do for us, and congratulations on your award.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, everybody. First, I'd like to say, none of this would have been possible without the love and support of my family, who is very understanding when at three o'clock in the morning, I've got to get up and, you know, head off to the EOC, and they're in the closet, and, you know, I'm down there with everybody, you know, making things happen. So I appreciate my wife Erin and our three kids, Sawyer, Brennan, and Hannah. Also, absolutely, we couldn't, I couldn't make this work alone. It's absolutely not a solo-man show. My Deputy Director, Robert McCord, and Administrative Officer Miranda Guy are critical to what we do, as well as the over hundred and twenty different staff that we work with here within Macon-Bibb County and our community partners. Everybody from Navisant Health to the American Red Cross to DFACS are all part of our team that make emergency management work and make us successful here in Macon-Bibb County. I've done this for a long time, as you heard, the mayor. I've had a few different jobs throughout the country, and I can say by far, working here in Macon-Bibb County has been the highlight of my career. This team is second to none. I've said that numerous times, and I still say it again. I think we've got the best emergency management team and community here in the state of Georgia. I've, it's a pleasure to serve Macon-Bibb County and Central Georgia, and I plan to keep doing it for many years to come. Thank you all very much.
Spencer, thank you. We appreciate your serving. One last little tidbit about Spencer. We were all down gathered in the EMA with impending weather disaster coming, you know. They spot these storms coming, and then they give briefings and say, it's here, and it's moving your way, and it's this, that, or the other. Join us for the next briefing at three o'clock, and we'll update you on this, that, or the other. And they usually always have a time for questions. And so Spencer asked a question, and he didn't identify himself at all. He just said, you know, punched and clicked and came on and said some question about what time is this going to happen? And the person at the National Weather recognized his voice, said, oh, Spencer, how you doing? How's everything in Macon? So he's well-known by people at the national level and national forecast. So Spencer, again, thank you very much. We're proud of you.
Thank you, sir.
Well deserved. Next item on the agenda is public comments on agenda items. We had one person sign up to talk about libraries. We have a couple of items on the agenda tonight about libraries. So we're going to call Mr. Robert Hawkins up to make comments about libraries, since we have a couple of appointments to the Library Board. Other people that signed up to talk about non-agenda items will be recognized later in the program at the end of our old business. Robert, you'll recognize for five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. I think that, I'm a college student at Middle Georgia State, and I need the computers at the library, because pretty much everything that I do for my online classes require a computer, and they are not, they're only open Monday through Thursday, and I work, so it would be good if we, you know, if y'all could not only keep them open, but keep them open for more hours, and like at night. Because, and then, I'm a psychology major, and it is ludicrous to take, you know, because studies have proven it, that for children in low socioeconomic conditions, for them to be resilient, and I could prove research with this in the upper-level children's class I'm in, that they, you know, that children with a library card, they tend to be more resilient to poverty and various other things. And I think that to take away the library's funding is ludicrous and nefarious. And I think that it should continue to have funding for more, for more hours, for the people like me who work and who, you know, who need night classes. And, well, I mean, sorry, we take online classes, but so that you could use the computers at night. I mean, and that's what I have to say about that. And I can get more, I can make a video and get more people down there at the library and in the community to talk if you need to, but...
Thank you very much, Mr. Tom. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your passion and your use of the library. Thank you very much, sir. Next item on the agenda is reports from our standing committees. First standing committee, Operations and Finance. That report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Operations and Finance Committee met on July tenth, 2018, and took the following action. The committee accepted the following grants. The first was a Justice Program FY seventeen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office for Macon-Bibb County Drug Court and the Public Defender's Office. This had no local match. The second was a Peyton Anderson Foundation Grant in the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars for the Oat Muggy Crossing TAD Master Plan and Visual Assessment and Concept Master Plan, as well as the Final Master Plan and Illustrations. The committee approved the following SPOLOX project expenditures. Eight hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars for the completion of the Elaine Lucas Senior Center and to authorize the appropriation of two point five million dollars from 2018 SPOLOX revenues in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement for the Macon-Bibb County Industrial Authority. We approved four hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and nine thousand dollars from 2017 and 2018 SPOLOX bond revenues in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement for the Macon-Bibb County Board of Health. And we approved four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars from 2017 and 2018 SPOLOX revenues for the intergovernmental agreement with the River Edge Behavioral Health. Committee approved the following agreements and contracts. A purchase and sale agreement with conditioned air in the amount of sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and five dollars for the purchase and installation of HVAC units at the E-911 Center to be paid from the E-911 budgeted funds. A facilities usage agreement to allow the Middle Georgia Community Action Agency to provide congregant senior meals, services at the newly constructed Elaine H. Lucas Senior Center. We approved an agreement with Tyler Technologies for New World Software licenses in the amount of one hundred eight thousand dollars payable to the IT Department Budget for Software Licenses and an agreement with Harris Corporation for Software FX Software Licenses in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-five cent payable to the IT Department Budget for Software Life Senses. And lastly, we approved a transfer of two hundred twenty-four thousand dollars from the state grants Georgia Department of Transportation to the property of Jeffersonville Road to pay for further potential right-of-ways. This includes Operations and Finance Report.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next committee, Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on July tenth, 2018. We took the following action. The committee heard a proposal to establish a cultural trust for Macon-Bibb County, which would help to grow the creative economy by establishing a cultural trust, a public-private partnership designed to serve the region's art interest. We also had on our agenda two nominations to the Library Board. Those nominations were for Sherri L. Goss and Mallory J. Gaddis. We tabled those because those two nominees were not able to be there, or our schedules didn't, we didn't get our schedules together. They were considered today in the pre-commission and were approved, and they're on the agenda for final approval by this commission later tonight. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. I understand no report from Public Safety. That takes us to Facilities and Engineering Committee, and that report will be given to us again by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Facilities and Engineering Committee also met on July tenth, and the committee accepted three unregistered paved roads in the Ken Cell subdivision Phase One for public use as part of the county road system. This completes the Facilities and Engineering Report.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. There are no alcoholic beverage licenses that have been submitted for approval tonight, so we'll move on to Old Business. And the first item of Old Business is the acceptance of a grant from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Office of Justice Programs FY seventeen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office, the Bibb County Drug Court, and the Bibb County Public Defender's Office with no local match and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is the acceptance of a grant from the Peyton Anderson Foundation for the planning of the Oat Muggy Crossing Tax Allocation District. That was amended in pre-commission to add the little contract for services by Wakefield Beasley. And the Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, and the committee of the whole recommends the approval of the amendment. Is there further discussion? Let me ask the clerk to read that by caption. I'm sorry. Read it by caption, the amendment by all the...
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to accept a grant from the Peyton Anderson Foundation in the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars to provide funding for design services related to the Oat Muggy Crossing TAD Master Plan, Visual Assessment, and Concept Master Plan, and the Final Master Plan and Illustrations. To authorize the mayor to execute a letter of agreement with Wakefield Beasley and Associates Architects to provide said design services in an amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand dollars for the redevelopment of the Oat Muggy Crossing area and for other lawful purposes.
As I say, the Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, and committee of the whole recommends approval of the amendment. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as amended signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is amended, is adopted. Next, we have a purchase and sale agreement with an amendment for some additional HVAC unit at the E-911 Center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement with conditioned air in the amount of sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and five dollars for the purchase and installation of an HVAC unit at the E-911 Center to be paid from E-91 budgeted funds and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval of the resolution as amended. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as amended signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution as amended is adopted. That brings us to item D, which is a facility usage agreement at the new Senior Center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a facility usage agreement to allow the Middle Georgia Community Action Agency to provide congregant senior meal services at the newly constructed Elaine H. Lucas Senior Center and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to buy some additional software licenses for the IT Department, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies for New World Software licenses in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars payable from the IT Department Budget for Software Licenses and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is another resolution for some additional software licenses for the IT Department, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Harris Corporation for Software FX Software Licenses in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents payable from the IT Department Budget for Software Licenses and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval of the resolution as amended. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as amended signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution with the committee amendment is adopted. Next is item G, which is the fifteenth amendment to the SPOLOX timeline, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the fifteenth amendment to the 2018 SPOLOX project timeline and budget as presented by the SPOLOX project manager and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate monies that were identified in the timeline, and I'll ask the clerk to read item H by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of eight hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars from 2017 SPOLOX bond proceeds and our 2018 SPOLOX revenues for the completion of the Elaine H. Lucas Senior Center. To approve and authorize the appropriation of two million, five hundred thousand dollars from 2017 SPOLOX bond proceeds and our 2018 SPOLOX revenues in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement with the Macon-Bibb County Industrial Authority. To approve and authorize the appropriation of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars from the 2017 SPOLOX bond proceeds and our 2018 SPOLOX revenues in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement with the Macon-Bibb County Board of Health. To approve and authorize the appropriation of four hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars from 2017 SPOLOX bond proceeds and our 2018 SPOLOX revenues in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement with River Edge Behavioral Health and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance with the committee amendment signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance with the committee amendment is adopted. And next is an ordinance to transfer additional funds from the State Department of Transportation to the Jeffersonville Road project, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to transfer two hundred and twenty-four thousand from state grants GDOT to property DOT Jeffersonville Road to pay for further potential right-of-way costs related to Jeffersonville Road Widening Project, Budget Supplement Number Twelve, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones, got your light on, sir.
For the project, I just wonder why we're being notified at this late date. There's still right-of-ways to purchase.
My impression is that as they are finalizing plans, they're going out and identifying small tracts or portions that need to be included in the right-of-way because of the construction design, so I guess it's just...
Just seemed like they would have known it before.
Right. But better late than never, sir. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item J, which is a resolution to accept some additional roads into the county road system, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the acceptance of three unregistered paved roads in the Ken Cell subdivision Phase One for public use as part of the property, as part of the county road system and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. And next, we've got item K, which is an ordinance to approve an additional payment to the Macon Transit Authority pursuant to our bi-party agreement, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation to the FY eighteen budget in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and eight dollars from fund balance to provide for payment of the Macon-Bibb County Transit Authority's FY 2017 working reserve deficit in accordance with requirements of the bi-party agreement between Macon-Bibb County and the Macon-Bibb County Transit Authority and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Yes. Where are we on the committee that was set up to look at some changes as far as Transit Authority? And in particular, this change that we've talked about for a while in the agreement that we have? Where are we on that?
The ad hoc committee had a couple of meetings, but to be perfectly honest, we haven't met in a long time. There were several discussions about additional routes and route revisions, because the routes hadn't been changed in a number of years. There was also some additional discussion about funding and levels of funding. But we need to get back on that. We have kind of just dropped the ball, to be perfectly honest.
This is a good opportunity while we're doing budget things, and we've had some people who have made it a point to attend the meetings of the Transit Authority and have not always been satisfied, but they've come to us and expressed their concerns. I think we've got enough people who are using public transit, and then we have the paratransit as well. And I'm not sure where that is. I think it's about time for a real update on that, so I would appreciate getting that in the appropriate...
I'll ask the clerk to schedule a meeting of the ad hoc committee at an early date for us. Is there further discussion about the item? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance to appropriate the additional two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to the Transit Authority for their 2017 deficit signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. That brings us to item L, which is another ordinance authorizing the Superintendent of Elections to call a special election for what's been called the Brunch Bill to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages beginning at eleven o'clock AM as opposed to twelve-thirty. So I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the Superintendent of Elections of Macon County, Georgia to issue a call for a special election to be held on the same date as the November 2018 general election so that the electorate of Macon-Bibb County may vote upon whether to authorize the city to permit and regulate Sunday sales of alcohol beverages for consumption on premises at restaurants from eleven AM until twelve-thirty PM to adopt an ordinance conditioned on approval of such referendum to provide an effective date and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is... The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next is item M, uh, which is another ordinance, uh, to appropriate an additional thirty thousand dollars of SPOLOST proceeds uh, for stormwater, uh, management emergency, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of thirty thousand dollars from two thousand and seventeen SPOLOST bond proceeds and our two thousand and eighteen SPOLOST revenues to provide funding for stormwater management emergency and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item N, uh, which is a resolution granting permission to AT&T, uh, install for free uh, to some improvements to the fiber optic conduits, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission, authorizing the installation and acceptance of fiber optic conduits, lines, and associate hardware as a donation to Macon Bibb County, paid for by the state of Georgia, to be installed by AT&T as part of a system upgrade for the tax commissioner and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Wren, win?
Free is approved.
Well said, well said. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is item O, um, which is a, uh, a s- two-week extension, uh, for the responses to an RFP, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission, approving and authorizing procurement to extend the response date for the request for proposal for health insurance plan administrator, stop-loss coverage, pharmacy benefit management, and auxiliary plans to include life, dental, disability, and vision insurance from July nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to August second, two thousand and eighteen, and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Mayor Protim, tell me.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Um, we- although we're extending this, I've seen at least three complaints on this, and so, um, it's probably, I don't know what we're gonna do on it, because it was just not done, uh, the correct way. Um, and I think that's why we're trying to do this extension. Uh, to this commission, uh, that I'll share that many local vendors did not receive this RFP, and that's why we're trying to do this extension. At least two of them have contacted me and said they don't have time, uh, by July nineteenth or the extension because it was not properly sent out to them. Uh, furthermore, the, uh, I'm not sure, I thought we were s- we were, uh, sending out the RFP for the entire health system, but I understand that BBNT is overseeing, uh, the actual process that we're even sending out. Uh, I thought we were bidding the whole- the whole thing out, including what BBNT has, because some folks feel like they are their competitors and just not a fair process. So, yeah, we're extending it, but I just think we're gonna- we're gonna hear, and commissioners, more commissioners are gonna hear about this, that, uh, how did this go out, and many local vendors did not receive it, and I think that's a problem. And, uh, we're trying to get this corrected because this is one of the biggest issues that face us in this budget process, and we really need to go back and look and see, uh, where the ball was dropped at.
Uh, is there further discussion? As I say, the Committee of the Whole recommends approval of the two-week extension, and f- uh, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution, uh, is adopted. Uh, next, we have a resolution of the appointment, uh, of an appointment to the Macon Bibb County Library Board of Trustees, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to appoint Sherri L. Goss to the Macon Bibb County Library Board of Trustees to succeed Frank Cannon and for other purposes.
Uh, the Committee of the, well, Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Uh, the next, uh, is item Q, which is a second, uh, appointment to the Library Board, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to appoint Mallory J. Gaddis to the Macon Bibb County Library Board of Trustees to succeed Janice Habersham and for other po- purposes.
Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. No, no, I- I- I would- I would appreciate it if Ms. Gaddis is- is here, would she stand up and be recognized? Thank you very much for your volunteer service to the Library Board, we appreciate it. And Sherri Goss was here earlier, um, but had to leave, but thank you both very much, uh, for your service to the community. Um, next is item R, uh, which is a, um, a resolution to- to, uh, retain, uh, work detail, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a work detail agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections for seven offender work details for McEver probation detention at a cost of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars payable out of the department budgets and for other purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Uh, finally, item S is a similar, uh, resolution, uh, for a work detail, uh, out of Dooley State Prison, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a work detail agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections for three offender work details from Dooley State Prison at a cost of a hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars payable out of Public Works Department's budget and for other purposes.
Uh, Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. That brings us to, uh, new business. Uh, thus far, there is only one item of new business that has been prepared and sent down, uh, by the County Attorney's Office, and that's a resolution, uh, authorizing the mayor to execute a beverage agreement with Coca-Cola Bottling Company United East LLC, doing businesses making Coca-Cola Bottling Company in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars over seven years to be paid, uh, to the Macon, uh, to be paid for Macon Bibb County Recreation. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee, uh, for further evaluation. Um, there may very well be additional items coming down from the, uh, County Attorney's Office during the balance of the week. Uh, the agenda, uh, will be published on Friday afternoon, so I would urge you, if you're interested, to- to go online and look at the agenda and find out exactly what resolutions and ordinances will be considered next week, uh, at, uh, the committee meetings, uh, that begin at nine o'clock AM, uh, on next Tuesday. And next Tuesday is what, the twenty-third? Twenty-four? Yeah, day seventeen, so that'd be the twenty- that'd be the twenty-four. Uh, Tuesday the twenty-fourth beginning at nine o'clock in the committee meeting room behind us. Um, so that, as I say, there may very well be some additional items that, uh, come down from the Attorney's Office, uh, for us to look at. Um, we've got several people now that, uh, wanna talk to us about non-agenda items, um, and I'm just gonna take them in- in the order that they've been handed to me. Louis Hargrove, and Mr. Hargrove is here and wants to talk to us, I think, about parking meters. Mr. Hargrove, you'll recognize five minutes. Thank you very much for being with us, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, County Commissioners.
Uh, yeah.
About these parking meters, first I wanna have a moment of silence for the people who lost their life this whole year. They once lost their life in the ricks. Give me a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Yes, uh, Mayor, Com- Commission. Uh, as y'all know, we got five different, uh, probably about five different, uh, I wouldn't say age, and working out at this government center downstairs. You got, uh, I know you got background check, farm you come in and get. I know you got where you come pay your fine at. Then you got the Human Resource Department downstairs, and they got meters all around this building. If people come down to the Human Resource Department to apply for a job, they, uh, don't have money to go, you know, meters. And I just don't think that's fair, to have these meters all around this government center like that. They shouldn't be out there, period. We tried this one before, didn't work. But there's a lot of things I can talk about, Mayor, but I done got so disgusted with Macon Bibb County, I hardly ever come down here and say anything. But I- I talk to people, it's a bad thing. I don't hold it in. But there's a lot of things going on in this county. That ain't right. This ain't right. You got drug code, you giving money to. Got money going to River Edge Behavioral Health Center. But you got all these, uh, liquor stores on every corner. Then you go down- down time down there and get drunk and get addicted. Then you send them over to River Edge. They don't do nothing for them. They don't want to get the money. The medical center, I don't know, but I know River Edge shouldn't get a penny. 'Cause they don't do nothing for them. Now, the drug code I can't say. But there's a lot of things I can talk about, Mayor, but I just don't come down here and speak like I used to. But I don't think my heart gonna be hurt because the way I was kinda shaping it in. As you know, we got a fool in White House, that's what I'm saying, yeah. He's a real fool. And, uh, just ain't right. I appreciate if y'all do something about the meters, 'cause people just can't afford them. And like you talking about online, a lot of people still can't go online. They don't have Facebook and computers and all that. But yet and still, they can't get the news. We don't have, we got these little local media groups, organizations, I guess they intern. 'Cause they don't spread the news like it should be spread, and it's just a shame that people's out there in the community can't get the news. You don't know when a meeting gonna be? Well, the PZ, uh, County Commission, or whatever. You have to find out the best where you can. A lot of people would be coming to these different places if they know when they were scheduled. And people be wanting to come to these meetings on the first and the third. That's when y'all have y'all meeting. They also have them on Tuesday and Thursday. But you got parking meters, people can't have nowhere to park because they don't have the money, they can't get in. So, uh, but y'all tell people to come, come. Yeah, they come when you're talking about taxes. But yet and still, every time you go in the store, you paying taxes. You know how much tax on a dollar? You mess around, go in the grocery store and spend fifty dollars, see how much tax you gonna pay. But I'm just saying, stop the violence, stop the violence, stop the violence, we been talking about that for a long time. And, uh, I will say this, they're gonna be through. I was driving down Pine on Avenue on Sunday, and I'm always aware. Guy just came right in front of me, and Pine on Avenue used to be real busy, but it's a particular time that wasn't that busy. And that guy ain't looked at my car, he just walked right straight by me. I had to stop. I just shook my head. It's a shame what's going on out them streets, and then you got a liquor store on every corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrove. We appreciate your patience, appreciate you being here. Uh, next, Mr. Robert Curry. Mr. Curry wants to talk to us about the senior center and, uh, rec center and parks and other items.
Good afternoon, everybody. Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Curry.
How you feeling? One love to you. Okay, thank you for the senior citizen, uh, fund that you just, uh, you all just mentioned. I know I can, when I go back to, um, elderly people will be truly gratified for the, uh, Congress Meals Program, 'cause that's a vital line, lifeline for those people. Even though some people take eating for granted, other people take it as a, it's a vital necessity. And, uh, I'm trying, I'm kinda puzzled now, these old people, they old, but they wise, Mr. Mayor. They asking me, they said, "Mr. Curry, what they gonna finish the building?" I said, "Well, ma'am, well, you know, we told him, ma'am, he couldn't give y'all longer days, but he could give you a building." They said, "Well, they done built this rec center in South Beale County, Warren and associate, they done built this fire station over there on the heat on Napier Avenue, and they- they must've be selling a skeleton crew down there." I said, "I'll build it." I said, "Ma'am, you know the mail." That's on you, ma'am. Anyway, I wanna talk, well, I thank y'all for that, and I will tell them that, and some of the people thought they wasn't gonna even be included in the building, so now that- that'll relieve them of a lot of stress, undue stress. But I'm gonna go to recreation, 'cause I'm for the old people and the children. That's my mission down here with- with you all. You say, "Come down here," but I plead, y'all don't really want us to come. But- but let, whoa, what a different two weeks make. Oh, when they were talking about the M-O-N-E-Y, it was packed out down here. People everywhere. We the people, they're like a nation of people down here when y'all were talking about that tax money. But now I'm gonna go, "Why they ain't down here for these children and this bad treatment, Mr. Mayor?" We had thirty million dollars, thirty-nine million, I'm gonna round it off to forty million dollars for recreation. Some areas was uplifted, some areas was pushed back. I'm gonna give you an example. Your area, sir, Mr. S- Commissioner Shepard, South-South Beale County, you flurries. Now, you flurries so to, I think they trying to make your little place out there a country club. They talking about coming up with fees to show enough bar cart to pull in the disadvantage. Okay, and you say, "Well, hey, what a shame it'd be if, if we couldn't man-staff this building. It would hurt everybody." But what about the children in Bayview, that y'all closed down the swimming pool, kill it out and made a splash pad? For the poor and disadvantaged children, black poor and disadvantaged children, swimming is a lifeline, 'cause they can't swim. Ninety-eight percent of them, and parents can't swim. When they get in the deep water, they can't get back, parents can't go get them, but they wanna play in the water like the other children. Okay, you kill out that swimming pool, they no different than your children out there in that area. A child is a child. Okay, who area, Mr. Mayor, Booker T. Washington? Raise your hand. Your area, Commissioner Walker. Okay, I go over by Booker T. Washington, the center closed, and DOT parking their equipment up down the playground area and the swimming pool closed. How does it deal? How can you as a commissioner and Parks and Recreation, Mr. Mo- uh, Mr. Walker, let that exist? They gonna be working over there for years and years and years. They did not have to do that over there this early in the game. They could've did that when the kids went back to school, but then, like I say, if we don't say nothing, nobody cares, we get nothing. It wouldn't have happened in a white neighborhood. They would not have did that in a white neighborhood, period. No kind of way. It's unacceptable and inexcusable, sir, to you. Okay, you over the senior citizen center too, I'm guessing, that's your area. We hadn't witnessed you over there through all the tribulation we've been going through. Um, that's you. Coming to you, Commissioner, uh, Tim.
Mr. Curry.
I can't do it like that, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, address your comments. Address your comments to the chair, please, sir.
Coming- coming to the, um, the- the recreation. Uh, Henry Burns Park, you got, you have five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars money for that park. You come up with money from your, from the, uh, selling, uh, Alexander, you put some money in there. That was a beautiful park, beautiful. Went by there a couple of times, tennis court. Oh, my brother gone right there. Pleasant Hill Playground, Matty Hubbard John. He had, uh, two hundred and twenty thousand for that. You put a forty thousand dollar makeshift bathroom there, somebody took the other twenty-five, I don't know where- where they get that forty-five from, and nothing has happened there. They got a Pleasant Hill Reunion shirt on, I grew up in Pleasant Hill, been to the reunion for eleven years straight. They got a bathroom, said handicap accessible, but it's not ADA type of plants. I've been talking about that for three years. You can't even get a wheelchair in there without falling off the ramp. Nobody cares, it's a black neighborhood. Nobody cares. Why? We all in this together, Mr. Mayor. We all in, we all broke together, we all in this together. So, you- you gotta do better for the children.
Thank you, Mr. Curry, we appreciate your comment.
I need five more, Mr. Mayor.
No, sir, I, your time, your time's up. Your time's up, but we sure do appreciate your passion, appreciate you being here. Uh, next, Mr. Johnny Hollingshead. Mr. Hollingshead, thank you for being with us. You recognized for five minutes, sir.
Well, thank you very much. Um, I'm glad to be here. I am, uh, steadfastly trying to be more and more involved, uh, with my city. Just generalities as I approach you all today, um, s- some of the things that concern me that I- I don't know if they have an instant impact, but I think in the long... but I think in the long run, they'll have a better effect or a more fruitful effect on the citizens themselves. Uh, small things, for instance. I'm sitting here and when you call for certain votes and you say yeah or nay, I don't have any way of exactly knowing who's voting yes and who's voting no. Sometimes I can hear a no, but I don't know exactly who muttered it. So is there a way that you all can have an indicator of how you vote? So that we can actually know who voted what? You know, can a green light come on if you voted yes? And a red one come on if you voted no? Um, there's another thing that concerns me is I think we are too, our approach is too individualized as commissioners. And I think that for me, maybe it's a fantasy for me, but I think that if every commissioner visited every part of this city, I think that it might change some of the ideologies of the choices of votes that you make. I think that, um, for instance, if a commissioner whose concern is North Macon, for instance, or if their concern is East Macon or whatever, but I live in South Macon. And I have a concern for our children and me as well as an adult or adults, just the entire community. I think that when you're talking about issues of transportation, when you're talking about issues of the conditions of the roads, if you don't visit the area that I live in, if you don't actually take your car and drive on the streets that I have to drive on and the other people in my community have to drive on, it's very easy for you not to be that concerned about the issues that I bring forward to you. I really wish that it was, if it was mandated for us, for instance, that every commissioner visited every part of town. I think then equity might raise his head. Because I think that we get caught up in equally sometimes and it's not beneficiary to the entire community. Uh, if we get a million bucks and all four, northeast, south and west want two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each, yeah, we split it equally, but the need wasn't equal. I think we need to get more into equity. And the only way you can figure that out is to visit every part of the city. No matter whom elected you to whatever area you in, I see an example of equity every time I come in here. There are more women in this city than there are men. So the restrooms outside, both of them are accessible for women. Only one of them are accessible for men. I think that's a choice of equity because they know there's more of a need for women to be able to use a restroom because there's more women. And the streets and the blight concerns are more prevalent in South Macon and West Macon and East Macon. And I think that's where more of the monies need to go because of, we are in, we are an entire city. We're not just a section of town that each commissioner represents. We are an entire city. And I don't know that you can feel the need to address issues as an entire city if you're only being in the area that you represent. Because the monies that you all use come from everybody in the city. They don't just come from the money for the people you represent in your block and, and your section that you, uh, representing as a commissioner. It comes from the entire city of Macon Bibb County. And I think that you all should visit more frequently every part of Macon Bibb County. As I first stated one other time. It is a wonderful thing that you do all of these improvements to the parks and recreation facilities. And our kids do go there and they have a great time and they get this great euphoric feeling. But when they return to their homes, it looks like garbage and trash and trees are growing around homes. Literally, there are some homes, I could take some of you, and if I didn't, wasn't there to point out to you that there's a house behind this growth, you wouldn't even see them. But this is the city of Macon. And, and I think until we start taking it as the entire city of Macon, not just the constituents I represent, it's gonna be a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingshead, appreciate you being here. Uh, Sheila Meriwether. Ms. Meriwether wants to talk to us about, uh, infrastructure, potholes in the street and a drain without a cover. That kind of thing, Ms. Meriwether, thank you very much for being with us, you recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I'm here about the area on Wooded Avenue, five-ten Wooded Avenue. It is between Grosso Avenue and Key Street. About a year and a half ago, the city came out and they posted one of the large signs that said, um, blight removal. The sign has been there for so long now, the blight is covering up the sign, nothing was done. And on that street, it's on Straight Street, there were two small potholes there. And there was no, uh, occupants in the apartment, no one lived there. But the city patched up those two little holes, but about twenty-five feet away is Wooded Avenue. The potholes are large enough for the front end of a car to go through. And when it rain, it is terrible on Wooded Avenue. I sent in the request for the, um, city click it, city fix it with no response. And also there is, um, my mother lives in apartment eight B. Across from her is a vacant lot and it's nothing but weeds there, but, and it smells like human waste coming up out of the ground. I called Macon Water, they came out and said, well, there's not a problem on our side. This is private property and you need to contact your landlord. Contact the landlord, which is Tucker, and Tucker, he said, well, I don't own the land, I just rent it. I said, well, human waste is coming up. And human waste was coming at the back door of two residents there too, and they had called Tucker. And I told him that the residence had called him and he told me that he had not been contacted. But he turned around and told me what a swampy area is at eight B. He said, oh, I see that, that grass is much greener over there, I understand what you're talking about. So nothing was done, nothing still has been done with that swampy area that has the fire order coming out. But the two areas at fourteen B, he did repair, he did something to stop the drainage. But there's drainage coming out five-ten Wooded Avenue and you can smell it. And there's, I contacted Macon Water, those big drains that you see on the street, it doesn't have a cover over it. I called and reported that to Macon Water. And the cover has not been applied in, it's been about two months ago on that. But the blight has covered up the top, you can't see that it's not a cover over the drainage. And I'm here to ask tonight that you all assist the residents with getting those repaired done, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much and thank you for bringing that to our attention, we appreciate it. Uh, Jake Farrow is next, wants to talk to us about the budget process. Mr. Farrow, thank you for being here, sir, you recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Commissioners. Um, I wasn't able to be here on July third. Um, I wanted to make some comments about the budget at that point. I'm just gonna make a, a couple of comments and I'm gonna show a graph that I think is appropriate. This is my opinion only, but I think it's very relevant. In two thousand fourteen, there were thirty-three million dollar reserve. That's when we combined the county and the city together. I think it was thirty-three million, around that number. And then two thousand fifteen, it started to be consumed, and two thousand sixteen, it continued to go down, two thousand seventeen. In two thousand eighteen, it's down to around four million dollars. I projected out, if nothing's done, if we don't do something, it goes down below the line and we're really in bad shape. And I put another line on the graph and I showed where we started with the thirty-three million. Then I showed in two thousand eighteen, had we attacked the budget and all the costs, the way the financial consultant says we need to attack the two thousand nineteen budget, once we get a five mil increase, I'm saying to myself, well, had we attacked it in two thousand fifteen and again in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and when we got a three mil increase in two thousand seventeen, we attacked the budget at that point in time, our reserve could be around twenty-nine million right now instead of four million. There's ten million plus in out, outside organizations, I like to refer to them as independent agencies. That number should probably be closer to six million or maybe five million. There are some real needs in that group of organizations that is in that, that list. But there's a lot of area of opportunity to grasp, what we need to grasp hold of, and that is the cost structure. The defined benefit plan, I think, should be converted to a four fifty-seven B. I think that should be done for all current employees. I think the top paid people in the organization, the county government, city government should be reduced. Uh, have their salaries reduced by twenty percent. We should also take a hard look at all the outside organizations, there are some that are in dire need. The National Gallery of Art in Washington DC was founded in nineteen thirty-seven. Not one taxpayer dollar goes to that museum. All our museums should have a focus to be self-sufficient in two years. All the museums, not just one or two, but all of them. The hotel motel taxes, are just some of my thoughts, should be allocated to those in need, but nonprofits should not get hotel motel tax. We should cap the C V B number, it's forty percent now. It should be capped at a number, forty percent up to a certain number. Then there's a, there's a tourism development component of the, um, hotel motel tax. I think it's like eighteen percent. It goes to the Georgia Sports Hall of Fame and tourism development. I believe just from, from my view of the budget, I went through the budget in, in great detail. It should be combined with the C V B and, and for efficiencies. The person that spoke earlier about the libraries, I think the libraries could be consolidated into three with more hours, more availability for people to use libraries. Instead of having four, you run three, it's just like companies. You know, they have four companies producing at sixty percent capacity. They combine, shut one company down and produce at ninety percent, same thing with the libraries. Um, combine, consolidate all of the authorities into maybe two, those are just some thoughts. But have we, if we attack the two nineteen budget, the way the financial consultant says we should, but get a big mil increase, of course, I'm always asking a question, well, every year goes by and this just keeps getting worse. I'm concerned about it, I love Macon, Middle Georgia, Macon Bibb. And I believe we have to make some really, really, really tough choices. Everybody has to have skin in the game, though, everybody. Employees, um, throughout the entire city, all the organizations. Everybody has to have skin in the game, make the tough decisions and we could be a lot better in the future, thanks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Farrow, we appreciate you being here, appreciate your, your comments. Um, next, uh, Michaela, uh, Makila, uh, Major. Hey, Ms. Major, you recognized for five minutes, wants to talk to us about, I think, about the library.
Yes, good evening, um, I guess a few things first, if you're gonna have five minutes. It'd be nice to have a clock so you could see that, I don't, the ding dong, um, I don't know about that. Um, I think you should find a way to have more than one library open. I was just down there Saturday, it was packed. I, people do use the library, not just low income, everyone uses the library. And maybe though, um, the, uh, she's not here, um, the new people that'll be friends or on the board, you can kinda work with them to maybe turn into more of a communication center so that people can communicate out to this, out of the library to the rest of the world because that's what libraries used to be, you read a book and you learned about different places of the world. Maybe just, I guess, do that in a different way. Um, that was the main thing. Um, and I did wanna ask, do the commissioners meet with their constituents at least once a year or something like that? Because I know we have a new one, okay? Um, but, you know, I don't really know her and I'll try to keep coming to meetings cause this is my first time and I've lived here, yes, less than two years. And if I had been here longer, I would've told everyone I could that consolidation is a bad idea. The city, from what I know, the mayor did not look like the mayor now, that reserves. People that don't like the ma-, the old mayor come in still, well, still whatever, take the resources and leave the city in tatters. That's the history, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Ms. Major, we appreciate you being here. Thank you for your comments. Uh, Mike Odom? Mr. Odom, you recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just for full disclosure, I've known Commissioner Winn since the sixties. Uh, don't hold that against her. Uh, thank you for the comments from the other gentleman. I've heard a lot of conversation here speaking about needs in certain areas. I'd like to talk about the needs of the special interests called the taxpayer. Uh, I haven't heard anything talked about cost reductions. I haven't heard anything talked about how we're gonna manage costs, how we're going to do anything but raise the mileage rate. Uh, in the pre-commission meeting and the things that were voted on here, you spent two and a half million dollars tonight. Uh, who's gonna pay for that? Uh, the lady talked about potholes in her street. If you could spend four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for grass on Bowden Golf Course, why can't you fix her street? Uh, you know, I heard a comment made in the pre-commission meeting that we've got, we've gotta do this so that by two thousand twenty-four, uh, we'll still be able to write, uh, car tags. Well, there was a study put out three weeks ago that of the two thousand cities, our size are larger, what was the outmigration? Macon was tw- forty-seventh on the list. We lost almost ten thousand people that year. Los Angeles was the highest at two hundred ninety-six thousand. Two thousand cities, our size are larger and we were forty-seventh worse in losing people? Well, let me tell you, by two thousand twenty-four, you'll have a whole lot fewer cars to write tags for if we keep this up. Uh, talked about the special interest groups. I think I support that libraries are essential, buses, people need them to get to work, get to doctors. A lot of things should be privatized, if the citizens want them, they'll pay for it. Uh, I wanna know why, at the force of law, taxpayers are subsidizing enormously successful financial institutions that don't pay one penny of property tax. If they don't pay property tax, we should not be giving them any service. Uh, I heard a lot of, I can't do that, well, what you're really saying is I don't want to. Uh, we've got bilateral agreements, it was discussed in the meeting, Commissioner Lucas, that we're locked in with increasing shares of the expense. Get out of those. Get out of those backroom, smoke-filled handshake agreements. Fol- folks, I've had a great career, I've worked all over this country and all over this world, with some intelligently brilliant people who had incredible compassion. Macon's going broke. I've seen towns and communities in West Virginia, Ohio, Illinois and elsewhere where the people like the commissioners made rules and didn't make decisions and they're boarded up destitute places right now. It can happen here. This gentleman that just spoke, he's on the mark. I have given a ten-page analysis to Commissioner Winn, I've got a copy of it here if you'd like it. You vote as a group, you're individually accountable. I say today, July seventeenth, everybody starts with a clean slate, you don't blame anybody. Mayor, we don't blame you, Elaine Virgil, we don't blame you. But starting today, we've got to be accountable to speak for the group that's paying for this stuff around here. Again, I think it's an insult to the taxpayer to be subsidizing Navisant, Mercer. Every time they buy a building to put a doctor in it, they take it off the tax rolls. That's not what that original agreement by Denmark Groover envisioned. It's an insult to the taxpayer that Carlyle Place pays no property taxes. That's a senior adult center. Uh, folks, I have seen it, you don't think it can happen here? It can happen here. Macon can go broke. He just pointed out, we are going broke. Everybody needs skin in the game, he's right, that's one of the comments I've made. Starting at the top of the organization, you should take a pay cut based on your income. It's ten percent, seven and a half or five percent. Every department should be given an order, you have at least a ten percent reduction in your budget. Any department manager worth his salt can find ten percent. I guarantee you, you've got redundancies, you've got overlaps, you've got inefficiency. Outsource things, let other people do it who could do better than us. I think the commissioners should have the most skin in the game. I think you should have the largest salary reduction. And then when we get back to thirty-three million dollars in our reserves, everybody can come back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Odom, appreciate your comments. And finally, Mr. Donald Richardson is, is, uh, here with us. Mr. Richardson, good to see you, sir. Uh, you wanna share some grassroots reflections with us? And we appreciate your patience and appreciate you being here.
Yes, I am, my, uh, prayer warriors.
Yes, I am my, uh, prayer warriors. Uh, we daily recite, uh, the morning, evening prayers from the Book of uh, Common Prayer of the Protestant Episcopal Church. So our lectionary, um, for this week and for the several weeks will be on Job. So this was just, um, uh, a commentary that I just wanted to, to read. It said, "The Book of Job in the Bible, the most splendid creation of Hebrew poetry, is so called from the name of the man whose history and afflictions and sayings form the theme of it, contents. As it now lies before us, it consists of five parts. One, the prologue and prose chapters one through two describes in rapping dramatic steps the history of this man, his prosperity and greatness corresponding, um, uh, to his goodness, godliness, then how his life is drawn in under the operation of the sifting providence of God through the suspicions suggested by the Satan, uh, the minister of this aspect of God's providence, that his godliness is selfish and only the natural return from unexampled prosperity and the insinuation that if stripped of his prosperity, he would curse God to his face." These suspicions brings down two severe calamities on Job. One depriving him of children and possessions alike and the other throwing the man himself under a painful malady. In spite of these afflictions, Job retains his integrity and ascribes no wrong to God. Then is described the advent of Job's three fa, uh, friends, Eli Fass, the tenor knight, Bill Dad, the shoe height, and Zophar, the nay of my faith, who, having heard of Job's calamities, come to condole with him. The body of the book and poetry, chapters three to thirty-one, contains a series of speeches in which the problem of Job's afflictions and relation of external evil to the righteousness of God and the conduct of men are brilliantly discussed. This part after Job's passionate outbursts in chapter three is divided into three cycles, each containing six speeches, one by each of the friends and three by Job. One, a reply to each of theirs, chapter four through, chapter fourteen, uh, chapter fifteen through chapter twenty-one, and chapter twenty-two to chapter thirty-one. Although in the last cycle, the third speaker, Zophar, fails to answer unless his answers to be found in chapter twenty-seven. Job, having driven his opponents from the field, carries his reply through a series of discourses in which he dwells in the pathetic words upon his early prosperity, contrasting it, contrasting with it his present humiliation and ends with a solemn repudiation of all the offenses that might be suggested against him and a challenge to God to appear and put his hand to the charge which he had against him and for which he afflicted him. Three, Elihu, the representative of a younger generation, who has been a silent observer of the debate, intervenes to express his dissatisfaction with the manner in which both Job and his friends conducted the cause and offers what is, in some respect, a new solution of the questions, which is chapter thirty-two to thirty-seven. In answer to Job's repeated demands that God would appear and solve the riddle of his life, the Lord answers Job out of the whirlwind. Divine speaker does not condescend to refer to Job's individual problems, but in a series of ironical interrogations asks him as he thinks himself, capable of fantoning all things, to expound the mysteries of the origin and subsistence of the world, the phenomena of the atmosphere, the instincts of the creatures that inhabit the desert, and as he judges God's conduct of the world amidst, invites him to seas and rains and gird himself with the thunder and quail, the rebellious force of evil in the universe, chapter thirty-eight to forty-two, verse six. Job is humble.
Mr. Richardson, thank you very much for your grassroots reflections. We appreciate you being with us. Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome.
No, uh, points of, of personal privilege. Don't see any lights on, uh, here. So we've reached the end of our agenda. I'm sorry, sir. Without, without objection, without objection, how about take three? Yes, sir, come on.
Thank you all for this opportunity, leaders of the city of Macon. I appreciate it very much. And what I, what I do have to say and what's on my heart, I talk about history a lot because I keep up with the history that's here in Macon and love the history here in Macon, but today I don't have my blue on, but I want everybody to know that I'm standing here today trying to represent the libraries. And the fact that the funds being taken away from libraries, it's important that we keep the funding and different stuff in the libraries because in our libraries is where we gain education. In our libraries is where we gain knowledge. And in our libraries is where we learn all of the knowledge and different stuff that it takes for us to be leaders like you are. If nothing else happens out of everything that's going on right now, please put the funding back in to the libraries because we don't need just one library. We need all of the libraries over. That's how we're gonna continue to be the type of leaders that this city need and that this world need. And I wanna stand for all of you that deals with the libraries. And I didn't have a chance to put my blue on today, but I stand in blue with the people for all the libraries here in the city of Macon. Let's see about our libraries because we need that knowledge. We need education. Elaine Lucas, I love the fact that you're into education and even have a school. But that is needed. That's where we go steady. That's where we go hard at learning. And that's where we move up in life to be the great leaders that some of you all have begun to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your, your comments and your patience. Uh, having reached the end of our agenda, kinda get a motion to adjourn and without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.